We're good?
Okay, welcome to the October 9, 2024, meeting of the Ollie County Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll start with a quick roll call. Hanning?
Here.
Platt?
Here.
Kornick?
Here.
David?
Yes.
Hinckley is here. We are at full strength, such as it is. Okay, there was an agenda that was set around for approval. Any additions, subtractions, rearrangements, objections? I had one thought that I'd like to pick up on and we'll get into it in the minutes is to look at the project list that we talked about the last time. So if it's acceptable to my colleagues, I would put that in. Oh, down here with maybe staff updates. Sound reasonable?
I told you, you're able to log in?
What's that?
I'm unable to log into the wifi.
Yeah, that's what Dave said.
Are you logged in, Michael?
No.
No?
Do we need to wait on that, or are you?
It would be nice if we can see what. Yeah.
Yeah.
He contacted our IT guy, so we'll see if.
It's just not me. How old are the laptops? Are they older than two years? This is what I'm getting a question of.
Mine is.
But it's always.
I was able to log in.
Which, which one did you do?
I did the, the guest one.
His ears newer than two years?
Because that's the only one without a password.
Yeah.
Yours newer than two years?
I think it might be a little tiny bit older than two years, but.
Yeah, so you're unable to join.
Good. Vanessa, she's been out.
For the record, we'll try to get logged into the internet. It's not clear to our listeners.
I don't know why not.
As far as seeing stuff, these guys can put it on screen.
Yeah, we can.
On the screen. You want to see the agenda on the screen? Let's just do that, if that's what you guys were fishing around for. Okay, if anybody needs that, it'd be bigger for me to read it, but I've got it in hard copy, so what's your pleasure? Does that satisfy those of you looking for?
I can't believe that. My vision is not.
No, I want to see a bigger, bigger. Oh, there we go. Okay, so the suggestion would be to scroll down here and add an item to the end of staff updates. That would be to look at our projects list that we talked about last time. Nobody had any other additions, subtractions? Let's have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second in discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, let's turn to the minutes of the September 11 meeting. Same question. Anybody want to adjust, add, subtract, modify?
Can I make a comment about the minutes? That it's great to have the questions that the commission have asked, but it will also be great to have the answers to those questions because it's not clear what the discussion was about. They seem incomplete.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's an ongoing question of how much effort do we put into minutes? And I've, we've had that same comment numerous times. Mr. Wilhams, what's your, you want to comment on that?
I mean, my only thing is that they're not, they shouldn't be a transcript, I guess, so I don't know.
I mean, the, the two poles of that are the agenda, yeah, we had a meeting here it was, and the transcript. But to be somewhere in between is, I think, where we want to land.
You can watch or listen to the whole discussion.
Yeah, I mean, you can go and look at the recording, but.
Right.
But even just a word about one sentence.
They could be short. I had the same comment because I think one of our questions, the answer was in there, and then there were a couple others that wasn't. And it would be easy to add those, like, my comment was on line 59 where Mr. Platt had asked where the, where it was on the thing, and, and it was a significant that Mr. Wilkinson said it was 372 feet away because that was from the creek, because that was one of the questions, right? So I, I think a comment about that would be helpful. And then also Mr. Hinckley's question about, you know, why did this happen in a more timely manner? Was it also a short answer? It would be helpful.
Yeah, it's, it's a, how far do you go? But I, I have the same feeling. Chairman Hinckley asked if there was anything Mr. Harris left. Kind of like, what did he say? So maybe the feedback here is let's, let's go a little further down that road of, of sharing the response with us without spending three days doing a transcript. And it's, it is pretty much a judgment call in terms of who's doing the minutes.
The other possibility would be, or a possibility would be to instead of making a more exhaustive set of minutes, I'm not saying what we have right now is exhaustive, would be to go to the recording and do a timestamp of the major topics and.
That's a great idea.
It's complete, and I think that'd be just as good as an exhaustive set of minutes, or even better, maybe.
Well, yeah, I don't think it would be a short answer if it says easier than it does. I bet that would be the ideal, is that someone could get a feel for the discussion by reading the minutes. So I think that's your comment, and we've heard that numerous times.
And I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just suggesting another.
So, and again, as the guy who does this, you want to share with us, I mean, how long do you, do you spend doing the minutes? Maybe it's a question of time allocation.
A while.
A while, was it a day, half an hour?
Probably at least. Yeah.
What?
A day. I mean, gotta go, I mean, typically, these meetings are four hours and go back and forth, listen to it a couple times, determine what's being said sometimes, and kind of trying to figure out how to put it in writing, and, I mean, yeah, it takes a while.
I don't know, could we, let's, let's ask our commissioner for a comment. I mean, what, what do you, what, what use do you make of the minutes? You guys, any thoughts on what would be more or less self-fuller?
As far as your minutes?
Yeah, as far as our minutes.
I'm not sure that they are included in our packet. For the county commissioner meetings, I take my own notes so that I know what comments made on any specific issue that is going to be coming before us, but I don't believe the county planning zoning minutes are included in our packet.
I guess I would say that the, if minutes were going to be referred to in any court case or anything, it's going to be a board of county commissioners meeting, and those minutes are basically the item, the motion, and the vote. So just to, the, the, all the packets that we have that these guys receive, they're given to the clerks, so there should be access. I don't know how you access them or where they.
They're, they're in the package.
I think it's.
Yeah, but it's not pulled out as far as PTZ in particular or anything like that, but I usually look at what you guys report is and the summation of whatever discussion we're looking at brings or, or whatever that's coming before us. I look at what you guys have prepared.
Okay. Mr. Harris, I mean, what, what's your sense? There's some argument about whether we follow the procedure. Do the minutes control, or do you automatically default to the recording, or where do minutes fit into your world?
I use minutes for showing action. I pull quotes from transcript.
Okay. Action like they did vote on that?
Like the motion. And to show that it was considered.
Right.
Yeah, that's like a subject level, but no, I mean, once, yeah, if it goes to an appeal, I figure out some way to hopefully easily dictate those minutes, or just listen to it, and then I try to pull direct quotes.
I'll tell you what bothers me. If we have the question in there, it will be nice to have some reference to the answer, even if you go through the recording to see what the timestamp, like Michael's suggesting. If we don't have any written response or timestamp to both, we shouldn't have the question listed either.
So what if we were to say something like, let's have a one-sentence answer? So what I'm cutting out of this discussion is the main audience for the minutes is ourselves.
Yeah.
And, and we go through those to remind ourselves what we did on a particular item, and, and the answers to the questions would be helpful to that.
Yeah.
I don't know, could we, can we try that and then give us some feedback? It's not the highest priority, but it certainly would. I think we all have this as we're reading along.
I mean.
What did we do?
I wasn't here, you know, when you were. It would be nice to know, do I need to go and listen to the recording and spend the time listening to the recording? You know, was there controversy? Was it, you know? I get the question and then the vote. That's it. So I couldn't, to catch up is difficult. If you're here, then, you know, the minutes are just, you know, you just go make sure there are no typos. But, but if you, you have missed a meeting, it's hard to catch up. So it would be nice to have something, even to just direct you to where in the recording you need to, to go.
And, and some of them, you just exercise your judgment, where this was a meaty thing, and you've, and you've gotten quite expansive, I think, some of the realty stuff in that way. So I recognize that there's some judgment that has to be thrown in here of what's, what's important and what isn't. But I guess I would just echo what we're hearing here is a little bit of an answer to a question. Is that the essence of the?
There we go.
Commission.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a moment?
Yes, please.
Do we have the IT support on hand right now or not? Because we should have internet access.
Um, it sounds like what happened is they, they upgraded their wifi stuff, and apparently they were worried that it might not work with older laptops and.
And it doesn't.
But again, is there someone available right now to fix that, or?
No.
Okay.
There's not.
Okay.
Bye.
But don't hesitate to ask these gentlemen to put anything on the screen that, that needs.
Or if you're able to, you can turn on a hotspot. Their, your cell data. No, I have not.
All right, well, I'm fine for this meeting, but I, you know.
Right, it'll be fixed by the next meeting.
That's fine.
It's been brought to their attention.
And that's why.
Okay.
There's obviously internet in the building. We should have access to it.
Right.
The question is, do I need to buy a new iPad?
The answer is always yes. Okay, back to the minutes. Useful comment, other comments on the minutes. All right, hearing none from my colleagues. I thought that the discussion of the potential projects list, that's one that I kind of stumbled on. We did have a list that we were presented that Mr. Gersh produced. It seemed to me that ought to be part of the minutes. Because otherwise, when you're listening to the audio or, or just reading the minutes, you don't have any access to the list that we were talking through. So if that would be appropriate to.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Attach that to the final minutes, and there were quite a number of individual suggestions that don't need to be in the minutes, but even just seeing the list would help people. So it was, yes, it was an open discussion as advertised, but the list would be helpful, and then we'll get back to that with the agenda item that we just added. So that was the only, I guess that's in addition to the minutes. So motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'm going to approve, yes, as amended. Second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Moving to second in discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, can I go to your glass?
I have.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes as amended.
I know. I have one comment.
Please.
There, there is a lot of repetition of the language of there being no something in a minute. Can we find a, a better way to state the same thing in future minutes?
Like what? Well, presumably you don't have.
Something about public, public comments. There were no public comments. Instead of saying there were no public comments, it's.
Well, all right, how about this? Let's, those who are watching the minutes, let's, let's bark some up, just as a template, and give them back to these guys. How about that?
Sure.
And flag the spots where you're thinking, let's use those.
I have it flagged, but I can't access it.
Yeah, I mean, how about that? We'll send it back to these guys, where you found yourself saying, yeah, the suspense is killing me. What did he say?
I, I had it, but I can't access it.
Okay.
But I will.
Go ahead. When you do have wifi, go ahead and send them to us.
I will.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, and then, and then you can give us some, some feedback and say, oh, those were the dumbest things I ever saw. Oh, yeah, good idea.
It's just simple grammatical.
Yeah. No, but the, the better we can make it, the better for everybody. Okay, so I'm going to make a little assignment. I'll send your minutes comments to Joe.
That's very standard meeting language. I don't know where it came from. It's probably archaic, but you see that a lot. Anything I've got.
Possible. It just agrees online.
We're all big English teachers.
British English.
All right, the motion is to approve the minutes as amended. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 opposed, save sign. Thank you. Disclosures. Ms. Hanning?
None.
Mr. Platt?
None.
Ms. Kornick?
None.
And David?
Nope.
The chairman says none, so we're cleared for takeoff. We have no public applications today. I don't have the Zoom screen available. I don't see any public. Is there anybody lurking out there? Okay. Then we are on to current planning projects. The first one suggested to us was the definition section. Mr. Wilhams going to tell us about that?
All right, so this is kind of the start to our zoning resolution update. These definitions are the definitions that mostly are currently in the land use table as it is now. There's other stuff that you can find throughout the zoning resolution that was also included, but most of it is from the land use table. So yeah, this is kind of the start to where we're going with this.
Questions, comments? The one I had was just a procedural one, as we try to herd all of our regulations towards increased coherence and good English. There's definitions kind of scattered all around. A lot of sections kind of have their own definitions they start with. Whereas chapter two is called definitions, what, what's just kind of the thinking of, where one finds definitions?
So there are some sections that have their own definitions, and we didn't touch those right now. Maybe at, when we go through the, the big overhaul for definitions, land use map, new zoning, or new land use table. I have all of the definitions for every section included into this one chapter. We're just not there yet.
But that's where we're going?
That's where I'm going. I don't know if that's where you're going.
I guess, is that good practice? It would be a very long section, but it, it has some sense to it.
I just think it's easier to find when everything is all in one place, but.
But what's our?
But you guys are decision makers.
Well, okay, Mr. X, you get to play in here. You're.
Yeah.
Added our, our regulations to make it work.
I mean, I think either way is correct. I, I like it when there are more specific definitions within a subsection, and it's a lengthy document, and I don't have to scroll all the way to the top. So if it's only going to be appearing in, in one, you know, specific part, then I think there is some sense in possibly keeping it there, but you know, there is no, no wrong answer without those options.
Which ones are?
Yeah.
Here. I didn't understand. So just land use table definitions?
Most, mostly. Like antenna is not in the land use table, so that would be an example of one that's just out in the zoning resolution. There's a couple other examples like that. I think, I think batch plant maybe is in, is in the APOZ, like, examples. So.
Look, I, it makes perfect sense to have a master list of definitions in at least one place, so you know you can go there. It's like a dictionary. And we can still have, you know, specific definitions in each section as they exist right now. I mean, that doesn't hurt at all to have them in two places, but if you know you can go to this place and find a word, that makes a whole lot of sense.
So you'd put them all there.
Put every single definition.
And then repeat them.
Yeah.
In context.
Fast, David. Yes.
So I agree completely that it's nice to have a chapter of definitions. But we live in a digital world, and what we can do in the text where these definitions are used is put a hyperlink. And so when you are looking for a definition in the text, it takes you to this chapter and to that exact definition. It shouldn't.
Mr. Gersh.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So one of the dangers in having the definition section and then having other sections with, with different definitions is if you have any crossover there, and you're like defining things that are like, like development, at one point, like we have development and aqua protection. We have development up here, and, I mean, I think we kind of differentiate it, you know? But I think if you have like the master list, you know, it's like, that is the definition. You don't have to like, well, you know, have them where they're kind of, maybe didn't notice that there's already a definition that's similar, you know? Just having it all in one place, I think it's kind of nice just to.
Parcels out. So you would comb them all out, please put them in here.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I don't really care that much. Because, you know, a lot of the, some of the definitions are going to apply to multiple chapters. Others are going to be just specific for that chapter. I'm okay with them all being in one place because then you know where to look for them.
Yeah.
But I'm also okay with them just being a specific, if those, those definitions are specific only to that section, then I don't think there's a problem with that either. I don't care.
I think you can just hyperlink them, and then you don't have to worry.
Yeah, then you're requiring somebody to approach them digitally, though. I do think the thing should stand alone.
No, I mean, have a chapter, have a chapter, all of them, all the definitions, any definition is in the definition chapter. But when you go into the text, and you're not sure, oh, what does that mean? I don't remember the definition. You click, click on it, and it takes you automatically to that.
But if you're not doing it digitally, then you would just have to turn to that pitch. I mean, I'm just saying, we should, we don't want to build these that that require a hyperlink, a digital. Then you need wifi.
You can. Here can.
Yeah, don't require, don't require the wifi working. Okay. Yeah, you can flip.
You can flip back to the, manually, but if you want it to be fancy, touch it like.
True. Well, good database management will tell you, don't have things defined in through for different places. That's just kind of basic. That's to your point, Mr. Gersh. So I guess I don't feel strongly, my inclination is with Mr. Harris, let's have, where I'm talking about it, but what, what this particular construction struck me is some of these are, are generic, many of them, most are probably, as, as you introduced it, land use table. Yeah. Which is in chapter.
Four.
Four. So I'd, I'd go one way or the other. Either put all the definitions in chapter two, or, or put the definitions with whoever they belong. This is kind of a mixed thing now.
Right. I mean, really, it's preference of you guys and the board. I mean, we'll do whatever you want. I plan to give them all to you in chapter two, but if you don't want it that way, then we can change it.
We can vote on it.
Well, that works. Okay, but, but so, so we're not there yet.
Correct.
What you've given us is just your.
This is just for stuff that is like currently in the zoning position.
Because it's a kind of impetus for this issue as we have the land use table, but none of it was defined. Anyway, what the land uses were.
Yeah.
So. Thinking about this from the general public standpoint, who's never looked at the zoning resolution before, I think it would be, make it far easier for them if there's one place to look for words that they all know what's, what they mean.
Well, and, and for us to, when someone comes in and says, what's a salvage yard do you? We have something to point to. It's not just like.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, I can remember when I first started, I mean, I've been nearly three years, that I'd never seen the zoning resolution before, and it was a little bit opaque. So I think this would be the way to go. I won't work with that.
All right.
Okay, there's, there's your feedback.
All right.
There's a universal agreement that we need definitions, and that we need single definitions in one place or another. It sounds like you can go wherever you want to. Whatever works for you guys best.
Yeah, so I guess your homework for this would be to read through them, make sure they make sense. If you have any questions, you can send them to us.
I like.
Yeah, and we can start to comb through them, and then also, like, if you see anything that needs to be defined, I would say.
There a particular place where this came from?
These definitions?
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of them came from a planning dictionary, but there's some that came from other places as well.
Well, I think as we've worked, the regulations, we've often come upon a place where we need a definition of that. We don't, we're the big discussions of parcels and lots, so it's a continuing challenge to say things consistently.
Is there a definition section in the copy that's in plan that we have to?
There's a few terms in the, the appendix, but not like.
Not like.
There's not like a whole list of definitions. I mean, it's, it's usually, the terms are like, more like, what is, I don't know, kind of general planning.
What is planning?
Yeah, what is planning, or what is? You know. Big, like cluster development, stuff like that, like these are the types of things that are in the, the plan appendix, and there's, there's not really that many.
No curse. So I was wondering about our last discussion about like Bitcoin and AI computing centers that are just huge and use a lot of water and electricity. And I wondered about making a definition for that and putting it on the land use table and prohibiting it, or maybe allowing conditional use of them if you want to not totally cut off that potential kind of thing coming to the county. But I just wondered about, after that discussion, I right away saw more articles in the paper about these facilities and how, how some, some of these facilities are getting county governments to sign non-disclosure agreements, and like not much public information is put out about them locating in some counties. I don't know, different states, you know, I don't know why they're able to do that. But it just got me thinking about, is there a way to just put that as a defined land use in the land use table and get out ahead of it if it should ever come to our county? I don't know.
What's the it that you're?
Well, I guess I don't know how you, how you term. What are, what do you call it?
Server farms.
Server farms? So that, that would cover both like these big AI generating things and Bitcoin blockchain.
I believe so.
Okay, well, if there's a term of art that sort of captures this, like, idea, I, I'd give. Idea, I'd I'd give for adding a definition and getting it into the land use table and deciding whether. You want to prohibit it across the border or if you want to allow it to be a conditional use permit in some places. I don't know.
Yes, I believe I. Have that covered somewhere in the new one that will be coming to you at some point, but. Uh, it's not in the the current one, so I, it's not defined here.
Well, and and as you work on, on the. Kind of parsing out our both residential zoning and our commercial zoning, you'll come up with a lot of places where it will be.
Yeah, and you guys, if you guys have stuff that you want in the landing stable, I mean, I have a lot of stuff in the landing table, but. Um, you can, of course, send it to me and I can make sure there's something in there for it.
One other thing that jumped out to me is the short term rental thing.
It's in here. It's in the new one. These are only things that are in the, in the current zoning resolution.
Because I think we're going to have to address that.
Yeah, it's uh, it's in the new one.
Okay.
Yeah, it's probably data center.
Yeah, and I have it, right?
You can call it whatever we want.
I think it's applying what it is.
No, but there's, I mean, there's definitely like a pre-existing term.
Yeah, sure.
Well, I had a couple of, we're not going to solve them right now, but as I read through the definitions to speak to your invitation to flag things that we thought. Needed development. This came up before. Leapfrog development and strip development, which were supposedly to avoid. That's considered good planning. So. What have we been doing out on the intersection of one thirty and Eric Lane? I mean, it just seems like we keep having things come to us and we say, oh, it's right there on a main highway. Why is that not strip development? And and why is it not leapfrog development? We're getting a little, little planning less this year.
Um, leapfrog development is typically like. Uh, I mean. Typically, when you use that term, you're talking about infrastructure. I mean, infrastructure comes into play. You're saying that um, like in a city, they'll have their development here. And now they, there's a development here and they're going to run infrastructure, water and sewer out to there. And that becomes leapfrog development because they're leaping over land that doesn't use any of that infrastructure. So they're not building up next to a city. Um, in our case, it's harder to to define and to apply because it's not. We don't have infrastructure in the county for the most part unless it's in a water and sewer district. I mean, unless, I mean. If if we want like commercial areas to be in those areas, then we we need to say that somewhere. But I don't think it becomes leapfrog development. Just because I I mean. That's not how our our comp plan just basically says we should have commercial near major intersections, right? And so. Um, so that's my leapfrog development um definition thought. And then. The the strip um stuff. Um, typically that's. Again, like it would be like next to a road or whatever and it's it's one lot deep. Um, that goes just along the the um, a highway or or a major road or whatever. Um, and then after that, there's nothing behind it or whatever. In the county, one lot deep could be, you know, a thousand feet back and you could, you know, you could actually. If you change it to commercial, you could do multiple commercial businesses on that. So it's not necessarily. Going to be, you know, a strip pattern of development. I don't know. I mean, that's where I think that, you know, with these definitions, we could definitely define them to what. And hone it in so that we. You know, know what we're talking about. And when these things come up, we know how to. Fit it into the conditional use applications and those types of things, but. I mean, those are kind of my thoughts just off off the cuff.
All right. So then maybe my comment is let's, let's work on those two definitions.
Okay.
To bring them out of an urban setting where they come from.
Right.
And into what we actually see, because I just continually felt like we've. We've approved things that would meet a common sense definition of those two.
Well, you could also, Mr. Ayers. Ask why we have that finding. Um, we have many parcels out of county that are as own as they are. Just because of their tax status way back when. Who knows where this finding came from? Maybe it just doesn't even apply.
Okay, okay. Yeah, let's, let's consider that as well as we're doing definitions. Where are we using? Use your point. Yeah. Okay, other feedback on definitions in. Go ahead.
So I I think that that's another thing that we can maybe work on is is what do we call commercial and how do we? How far do we go by breaking commercial?
We're getting there.
Yeah, I know.
It'll come forward.
Yeah.
Mr. Ayers, please.
I guess one thing I I would caution against is just trying to put. Two type uh of parameters onto everything, um, certain things like leapfrog or strip development. Those are. Pretty well understood, like uh, terms of art and the planning and legal um context. Uh, so by just saying them, you're, you know, providing a meeting that you don't necessarily need to back up with a definition. Um, and just. To be cautious of defining yourself into a box. Um, where there's clearly a situation where that's what it is, but because you've kind of defined it too. Uh, too strictly, it's not going to cover that.
Yeah, no, that's a a a fair caution. I guess what I'm hearing, Mr. Gurch, to say is something particularly like leapfrog development is really. Tied to urban infrastructure. That makes good sense. And and maybe it's just a term that doesn't. Apply to us.
Right.
That that wouldn't be covered by a more general admonition to us to. Maintain compatibility with surrounding land uses. I mean, we cover some of those same bases. In other, in other ways more appropriate to the county.
Yeah, I mean, it's also when developers just push it off. Uh, you know, far so there's like huge swaths of empty open land. Um, and then you kind of get that. Urban sprawl like Phoenix.
Right. I think that would fail a compatible with the surroundings test.
Yeah, because you have highly dense like urban.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, this is hurting this thing forward, but other, other, other thoughts to give these guys some direction. Do you have some further questions for us? I mean, does that, does that kind of like a discussion you were looking for?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yeah, we just thought it would be good. You've been asking and we've been saying like, yeah, we're working on, we're working on. So it's just nice to kind of. Get something in front of you. I mean, this isn't like. Anything. Crazy or anything like that. Um, and we'll really dig into some stuff when. The map is done. I have the other two things done. I'm just looking.
When we get to the.
Other two things being what?
The land use table and the definition.
And the, I guess we'll get back to this when we do the priorities and I want to bring that that whole list back up and these should be on that list. Anticipating that, I think that the parsing out of commercial is probably near the top of the list. It's the one we. Continue to come up against. So as we're prioritizing. These kinds of efforts.
It's done. I gotta finish the map and then.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, ready to move on um.
I believe we have adult entertainment.
Do what?
You want to change the definition of it?
No, no, I'm just amazed that we're getting to this level of definition.
I think it was already defined.
Yeah, I know. I'm seeing it in front of me.
It's been an issue.
Yeah, right. I think that particular store was fairly short lived, going out Fort Sanders.
That's what I've heard. I I think this is before I'm.
Those are.
We had someone, we had someone call and ask about potentially opening one a couple of years ago and then. I don't know where it went.
I think every couple of years we'll have something like one is in it is what I want to do and then they never.
Well, Laramie has not a great adult, I don't know, maybe it does.
Laramie had a history of.
There you go. Okay, zoning resolution amendments, conditional use discussion.
All right, um, Mr. Chair, commissioners. So um. What you have for you um was was an amendment to address. I think it was Commissioner. Wildlife um habitat uh use or impact or whatever that. Basically, we we can, we should put that in our conditional use permit so that we can. Um, look at that and in addressing the impacts. Um, what, what I have here is I, I, what I did and. This is not complete and we need to do it over, but um, what I did and what's before you is I put it all under environmental impacts. I put. Air quality, water quality and wild wildlife habitat. I'm there kind of this wild environmental impacts. Um, since then, I've talked to um to Matt and we've kind of discussed um this. Um, one of the things is we probably just need to pull out wildlife habitat. We can do the water quality, air quality together. While the habitat is kind of a different deal. Um, so we feel like we need to pull that out. Um, while we're in here doing this, we also talked about um potentially. Um, because and we've had this discussion about reviewers. It's like, oh, we get these reviews. What do we do with them, you know? Um, working on some language and put in here too as well to say. You know, um, these, you know, these folks will review it. If we do get we get their reviews, we can. Use their comments or recommendations as conditions within. Um, the conditional use impacts, like if, you know, they're talking about. We get something from Game and Fish about wildlife impacts and we have this wildlife habitat section and. We can stick that, you know, they're they're recommending that, you know. They um don't cut the grass in October or whatever. And, you know, we put that in there or whatever. Um, so we can address that. What's that?
No mo may.
No mo may.
You're not allowed to mow in May.
Okay.
May, the month of May.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we'll put that in there. But um, but yeah, um, and then also. Uh, Mr. Ayers, I think brought up hazardous materials. Maybe we should have a section there. So. If there is going to be storage of hazardous materials or use of hazardous materials on the. On the property, they need to tell us what that is and and address any impacts that that come along with that.
Along those lines, may I add uh soil?
Okay.
Because we we actually get uh a hold of view of the, you know, soil impact, right? So I think it would fit in here.
So yeah, that's actually, that's much better than what I told David. I was saying more like land impact. So like air, water, land. Was soil fit under environmental?
Soil, soil conservation is environment.
Okay, so we can add a.
Oh, yeah, if you just added land quality.
And that's.
Okay, let's fin- finish up what you were going to say, Mr. Gurch, and then we'll.
Well, really, that that's about it. It's like, um, yeah. We're, we're going to make this, we're going to do some other things, I think, before we move it forward, if that's okay with you guys. And if. And if there's other I, other impacts that we should be addressing, then we can. Plop those in there too, but but I think the big thing is is like. Um, just that review thing. I I I think if we have that in there, define. You know, what these reviews mean and how we can implement them into our permits. I think that will be, that will move us forward and we can get past some of. Our discussions that we've had before. It's like.
The thought is that it that by putting that in there, it it explicitly authorizes us to absorb those as conditions.
Yes.
Which we might be sketchy on our authorization otherwise. That that's the idea.
Yes, that's, yes, just to make it cleaner. Um, and and they'll be tied, they'll still be tied to the impacts that we have listed to review. But if we get a comment specifically from Game and Fish or DQ or whoever. Then we can use that and and take their recommendations and then put those in there. Um, and it it just shows that like we're, we're trying to gather information about these from other people that. You know, me and Joe just, we don't have all of the the, you know, background to to know what. What's going to affect Mieldier and what's not, you know, that type of thing. Um, so, yeah, that's our thought.
So, um, all right, this is an open discussion of specific.
Those sound like really excellent improvements. Thank you.
Yep, thank you for bringing us, for starting the.
Quickly too, this is great.
Um, okay, and you're amend the Alba County Resolutions typo, section, chapter five, section seven. You just missed a. Missed a, okay.
Oh, okay.
Uh, just so everybody's clear, we like, we'll try to find this.
Thank you.
So I, I've kind of, the the findings are always a. Something I I dive into. The language. That's used here and in some of the other findings, the proposed conditional use will address potential impacts. Well, I could address the impacts by saying it's going to kill a rainbow of Alba County. What what we need, right? I mean, I've addressed the impacts then.
That's when you would say deny based on this impact.
But no, but you don't have the jurisdiction to that. You need to say, like we have on the others. The proposed conditional use will not result in significant adverse environmental impact. I I think you need to give it an affirmative statement like we do for economic impacts. Conditional use will not result, air quality will mitigate. Uh, separation of uses will provide adequate separation. I mean, most of the items in the. Explicit findings that we're required to make have a affirmative statement of. You, you won't. Creates significant impacts. So maybe this is just a, an use of the words, but it seems to me we ought to. As we're cleaning up our regulations, both just to achieve some kind of. Parallelism in our syntax, each of these should should be a, an affirmative. You're going to do this, and if you fail to do this, then we will have reason to reject the permit. And to address something is to my mind different than to not do it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, so I would add the statement. The proposed conditional use will not result in significant adverse environmental impacts. That would make it parallel to the other findings and and then it queues it up for. Uh, an affirmative finding on our part. Which is necessary to to move the application forward.
It's partly, I think awkward just because it's. It's, it's a, it's whether or not the application. Addresses these things. And then we would be looking at and saying, well, but there. You say you're addressing it and we have a letter from Fish and Game that says you're not. And then we'd be able to deny or condition it. But if I think the the, it's mostly because it's all framed around. Is this in the application? Did the application address this, this and this? And may, maybe that's what makes it hard to word it um. The way Commissioner Hinckley is suggesting.
Well, yeah, I mean, the first sentence is written, seems to me is crying for the proposed conditional use application will address potential impacts.
Well, perhaps it's a question for Mr. Ayers. Can we not? You recommend a denial of an application. When we find that there's some use which we don't want to see. It has the exact word that Mr. Hinckley put out, you know, figure I kill all the antelope and. In Albany County, you have, they've addressed it, but we could still deny the conditional use because we. We don't have this, have a specific language for that, do we?
Or do we? Or or does it say you're not allowed to kill all the elk, to use my extreme example?
Well, I suppose first of all, I'm sure Ben David will back me up on this. There are no antelope in Albany County. No, I mean, yeah, it's, it's better to. To have that language defining me. The ultimate determination, which is.
The ultimate determination, which is, yeah, some sort of, what what was it? It was adequately addressed before?
I think it's something like that. Was it was a combination, the proposed conditional use will mitigate any air quality. And then in world class, same way, will mitigate any adverse water quality impacts. So the language that we're deleting actually has more kind of teeth in it than what's being substituted.
Um. So now it's the the proposed conditional use can apply as with the following criteria.
But yeah, I mean, that's that's the lead in for the whole the whole works.
Sure, yeah.
Environmental impacts.
To be clear.
I I think I'm just trying to make it better.
So.
Better regulation, I'm not changing.
I mean, it would be, based on what it is now, the proposed conditional use will mitigate. Uh, any the impacts to air quality, water quality and land quality. Um, so yeah, currently, that's the mitigations, I guess it's whatever. Uh, standard you guys wanna see, whether that's mitigation or. You know, you could do it like an actual zero will not adversely impact.
Yeah, well, if you look at.
As maybe we have some room for, there is an impact, um, it's like a non-zero kind of standard. Um, but yeah, no, it should be not addressed, it should be some sort of. Like qualitative determination or quantitative of this.
And and looking at the the rest of the list, um, it's, I suspect this kind of evolved and the language got. In some cases, it says will mitigate, in some cases, it said will not result, so we've we've mixed our our findings.
Well, it can be, I mean, it could be both, you know, like with with environmental quality, like that would make sense for it to be. Um, you know, mitigate because arguably, any. Activity whatsoever would result in some impact.
Uh, let's talk about a cement plant as an example.
Now, now.
Just as an example for air quality. Um. You can't have a cement plant without. Damage to air quality.
Yeah.
But we can demand them to mitigate it by. Scrubbing it off.
Absolutely, yeah, exactly.
No, this is a substantive difference. The language I quoted, I drew from from, say, the economic one. We said will not result in significant adverse impacts. That was the language I was proposing, would not result in significant adverse environmental impact. That is a stronger statement than shall mitigate any. Right?
Uh, not necessar- well, uh, will not result. I mean, I guess it's it's almost keying in on different things that you wanna see. Um. Yeah, I think mitigation is is kind of like, okay, we're understanding that there's gonna be impacts, but we wanna see you take proactive steps to lessen.
Minimize.
Uh, whereas, you know, will not result in significant adverse impacts. Arguably, you could say that that actually allows for more of an impact, significant. Um, mitigate, I mean, means to lessen to a pretty low degree.
Does it, or just means to lessen?
Oh, no, this was a thing for during rail tie, and yeah, there were some definitions that says, you know, as close to zero as possible.
Does that's what mitigate means?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, on on general nuisance, as we use the language, will minimize. So we have a, we have lots of things to choose among.
Yeah, I would say, uh. It'd probably get to be somewhat consistent, I guess. I mean, if you want, this could be, um, something I can bring back to board of. Sort of which.
Okay, I I.
Definitions you might want or.
I I use this to key me into a the whole list and I'm and realizing that it's it's so mixed and and then what is it we want to say? And is it? No impact, which is almost like saying we're just not gonna do anything.
Or yeah, that would, no impact would be nothing.
And then that's probably the utter authority anyway, so then we can minimize or we could mitigate or we could significant. So, yeah, I I would be happy to have some feedback on what the legal meanings of those are.
Uh, I mean, the legal meanings are there, they're playing an ordinary meeting, it's not gonna be like a McDonald's bar, so, yeah, really just dictionary definition.
There's also another extreme where you allow conditional use, knowing there will be some pretty significant impacts. I'm not gonna point out an example, but there might be something to do with like national offense or something, who knows?
Well, yeah, um, which I think a lot of communities do, where it's pretty much just like, you know, if you find a a good enough location. Where it's not gonna spill over that much and, you know, kind of keep to itself.
But but a good regulation is, on the one hand, we don't want it to just say, you have to make the five members of the, or the three commissioners happy, full stop. But that doesn't work, but on the other hand, I don't think it can be. You will have no impact on anything, so somehow you've gotta find your way through the between those two extremes.
No, mitigate is better than minimize. Minimize means small as possible amount or degree, whereas mitigate. Uh, make it less severe, serious or painful. So.
Okay, just to step back a little bit, like, I mean, we're talking about a conditional use permit, right? So this is, this is a permit for something in an area where there's a bunch of allowed uses, but here's the exception. And so like, depending on what the use is, and, you know, like. It might be okay to have more of an impact in one area than, you know, in another area. You know, if it's in another property, then maybe a little bit of impacts a lot, you know? I mean, I I guess when we do these definitions and however we define these, we just need to make sure that we also. You know, can fit it into wherever the area is that, you know, we're seeing this permit, you know? Um, and and typically with the conditional use, it's also allowed in a in a diff- different district too, you know? Um, we'll see that, except for it's like, if it's an industrial and then it's a conditional use, then that's pretty much the only area you do that, but.
Yeah, we have the the, we have the same kind of terminological ambiguity, it seems to me, in our zoning changes, for example. Whereas at other places where we have, here's all these findings we have to make. So I'm 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 thinking of that as remedy's discussion as well, is that throughout our zoning resolution, we should try to tighten up. What is, what is the finding? What does it mean and and how much teeth do we wanna give it, so?
Well, this will be a good exercise then, so we get it done in in conditional use and then we'll apply it through.
That's where I'm going.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I guess Commissioner Van David and Commissioner Platt, just because you brought up kind of these like larger. Yeah, things that would have like very huge impacts. We also maybe should just keep in mind like the scope of what what we can permit. You know, those those big things which would have massive impacts, you know, if it's permitted by the Public Service Commission. We can't have anything to do with it if it's federal.
Well, understandably, yeah.
We can't have anything to do with it.
It's just a.
Yeah, yeah.
There could be a conditional use where we recognize this would be some adverse impacts and allow it. Certainly, that's possible.
Yeah, such.
Not desirable, but possible.
Yeah, such as a cement plant.
They they have to get a state air quality permit. Even so, as a batch plant, they have to get permitted by the state to run their facilities.
Well, the in rail tie, it was industrial sighting, I think, is is probably, if you're remembering, they have, there's a lot of things that industrial sighting does that preempts what counties do. If I remember right.
Uh, no, that one, that one's weird because it was specifically pronged out to both state and local. But I'd say absent that kind of state delegation.
So, conceptually, we're on the right track here. We want to require a finding of. Fill in the blanket environmental impact, no significant, that the that it adequately mitigates or whatever. So I guess it sounds like we need to, we need to play with the language a little bit more. And then at the same time, look, look at those other ones and see, do we really mean to say? Will not result in significant economic impacts, uh, will will provide adequate separation. Maybe those are all fine, but but let's let's apply this same discussion to all those. And and what I'm looking for is something that that we could queue up and say, can the county affirmatively say it meets this? That we could make this fighting, because we we tend to be kind of loose on that sometimes. And then, if I understand the suggestion, let me just say it, see if I got it right, is that you're you're thinking that water, air quality and land are a thing and wildlife is a separate thing. Is that where that was going?
Okay, yeah.
I have a little problem with land because. What what do, what do you call land?
That, which is not water.
Or fire. Yeah, it's hard because soil, soil is a specific part of land, and you might not have soil, you might have rock. Um.
The land is also has such a vague, you know.
I think that's kind of where where we want that.
I do too, yeah.
A little more broadly encompassing, maybe this thing goes.
You don't wanna have to think of everything.
Yeah.
Well, that's DQ has land quality, um, air quality, water quality.
Well, and yeah, and their land quality is specific only to mining operations. If you wanna apply a condition, you kind of want it to be broad so that you can fit it in there, think.
Yeah, just, to me, land is so, it can be also something virtual. I I'm just, only not worth it to discuss.
That queues up a a second conceptual issue that I had with this. So that is this, the, based on recommendations from a federal, state or county agency and special expertise. And when I first read that, I I was looking at it from the completely opposite side of what you've just explained. Uh, certainly, we should. Be able to bring those the, say, game and fish uh, conditions in. But looking at that coin from the other side, does this language preclude us? Adding conditions that have not come to us from a federal, state or county agency with special expertise?
No, because it's may, these impacts may be addressed. Uh, through proceedings of the permit.
With jurisdictions or through conditions placed on this permit, based on recommendations. Okay, so then, if we felt that an appropriate condition had not, if if we wanted to impose a certain condition, it had not come from one of these. This would be fine. You see, by.
It it depends on the specific context of the condition. Um, you know, using that say or thus sort of framework of, um. You know, what our regulation conflict with or duplicate. Uh, something which is charged to a state agency for its regulation.
Which would be true whether we make these changes or not. So I guess I'm I'm just asking, if we put this language in, does it change our authorization to impose conditions in any way? And does it restrict those by its reference to, I mean, there's kind of an implication here that that we couldn't just amongst ourselves think we wanna see wildlife friendly.
I think it's, um, I mean, David, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's it's signaling to applicant. It's like, hey, this is a decent starting place, um, to provide information is if you have some sort of other. Uh, you know, per reg agency, what is that looking like, full and proper?
Yeah, yeah, and kind of my thought was, um. You know, if if they have a air quality permit, so we know that they're going to be regulated by the state's air quality permit. Or, you know, if they have, um, you know, other permitting from other agencies or whatever, I mean, that's something they could provide us too. It's like, hey, we've we've done this or whatever, and and if there's any recommendations in there, there there are again, we know what what's being regulated already. Um, and then in addition, if if there's a an agency that doesn't have any like regulatory authority, like Game and Fish really can't do anything about what we're doing. Um, we're giving them a chance to then say, hey, these are our recommendations, we want you to stay away from the creek this many, you know, feet and. Um, don't build right here because that's where, you know, the the moose are eating food or something, I don't know.
Right.
Like, and and then that gives us the opportunity to then shove that in there as a condition, it's like, okay, you you need to not do those things.
I I understand that side of it, mine's, as I said, mine's the other side of that, of let's say, we never heard from Game and Fish. But here's a conditional use.
Oh, sure.
We feel, um, should be set back from the stream, and then somebody says, well, where'd you get that? And and we can't point to any Game and Fish recommendations, we didn't get one or.
Right.
The answer is, we got that.
Come on.
Just us.
Yeah, I think with that, the impacts may be addressed, um, although I think David and I need to discuss. Everything outside of that sentence, because if there is a permit from a regulatory agency that is federal or state. Our ability to then condition that is almost certainly going to be precluded.
Yeah, yeah, no, if DQ said it's okay with us and it's something they have jurisdictional, then we can't preempt that. No, I understand that, but again.
No, yeah, but.
I guess, to go back to what you're saying, um, uh, I I I understand what you're saying. I would feel more comfortable if we're following an agency's, you know, recommendations and not just coming up with our own. But I guess it is problematic if we don't get anything from them, so.
Which has happened.
I mean, yeah, which has happened, yeah, so.
What happens if like a university professor comes and gives public comments about something? And they, that's like their body of research, and they make a persuasive argument for why. We shouldn't allow a land use in a certain area. Um, I I just, because I had the same concerns as Chair Hinckley, is 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 that wording? Too too restrictive on who you can take advice from? Um, or can it be broadened out to like include, um, people, people with expertise in an area? I I don't know. Um.
Well, I, I mean, you could look at it from the the point of view that anybody that comes up to this pulpit is, uh, basically a a public comment. So can we, I guess the que- the bigger question is, can we take public comments, you know, on some of these other issues? And, you know, make a condition based on those? I mean, I think you can, as long as it addresses, it ties in with one of the impacts, so.
That's, you know, depends on whatever this body finds credible. Like, if I get up here and start telling you about scientific water impacts, that clearly would not be credible, but.
Right, yeah.
But that's a fast, no, I'd like Commissioner Hennings' example is exactly what I'm thinking about, that that this doesn't say, oh, you have to have gotten it from a federal, state, county agency with special expertise.
Incredible public comment?
Uh, no, I wouldn't. That's that's a background standard, that's why I was gonna be there.
Could we say recommendations? And and right now it says recommendations from federal, state or county agency, could we, I just add to that list and say from the public or commissioners or?
Frankly, I think it would be better to remove that second sentence in its entirety.
And just leave it undefined.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
But then we can't use their recommendations for.
Well, you just have to tie it into a, so I think.
A finding.
Yeah, well, we are, I don't know, David, maybe had a different plan, but I thought we were going to essentially just address. For each application conditional use permit, it will be sent to these agencies. Here are, here is what, um, you know. The county can do with those recommendations that are received from the agencies.
Yeah, that's my, that's the purpose.
Right, so I think it would be, it would be addressed sufficiently somewhere else.
And and maybe that's the way out of this box is to, what we're looking for in this is the specific. We are. Are allowed to base a recommendation on these agency comments.
Correct.
But to not step over to, we are required to have our conditions based on agency comments. There's, there's the distinction. So maybe we need to more clearly say what it is we want without inadvertently saying what we don't want.
Correct.
Okay.
We should certainly be able to. Take recommendations from staff. For conditions and our own judgment as well for directing something to the county commissioners. Okay, that's what we're here for.
So another topic I'm just want want to throw out for consideration is. Um, it seems to me. That we're often unable to do anything about concerns about um. Road safety. Like, say, say a conditional use was going to increase. Traffic. And Y dot says. Nothing to see here. You know, we don't think you have to do anything about it. But we have a room full of public who are very concerned because they drive that road every day and they know what it's like to have to make a left hand turn. Can we? Condition something safety wise? Or is that like now we're now we're asking you to build a pullout on a state road and the state has to be a part of it?
Yeah, no, that's that's gonna. Be getting out of our jurisdiction.
So it only work if it was a county road?
Yeah, we have a a lot of the conditions. One of the findings is. Proposed conditional use provided ingress and ingress. With particular reference to automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow and control and access in case of fire or catastrophe. So. Unless we're preempted, we do have something in there.
We can.
Wires of finding.
We can always deny. Um, it's, it's the the conditioning. Is is where you get into trouble.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So what I just read, we could say we failed to find. That it meets that criteria. That's our denial.
Yeah.
Okay.
E- even if you have a letter from Y dot saying they don't have a problem with it. If we had enough. Public comment and anecdotal stories about what they've, you know, almost experienced getting crashed into. We could. We could still deny. A conditional use.
Yeah, you, yeah.
Yeah, as long as you tie it into the finding.
Right, okay.
It's, yeah, it's.
You just can't condition a a state agency to.
To do.
Cooperate. Right. So where we left that, where we're going to play with those words and and look at it in the context of all the other findings and. Kind of tune that up. We'll see you, we'll see you next time. Okay, other thoughts on that? Again? Um, all right, then let's move on to staff updates. And there's a long list there. Who's delivering?
Okay, so zoning resolution amendments and the wastewater regulation amendments are scheduled. To. Be before the board county commissioners at their November first meeting. And then the the wastewater regulations were re. Published for a hearing, so there'll be a public hearing for those. And then um the board can make a determination on whether to go forward with with those those amendments.
Has they been getting comments? Do we know what the?
I have not received any. So I don't know. See you guys or anybody else, but I have not. And then the L R M area or L R M growth area plan. The intergovernmental agreement is we're still waiting on the city. We community, I talked to to them today and hopefully. It will have something to us this week, so. But we'll see.
You say you talked to they. Who'd you talk to?
Philip and Derek.
Okay.
Yeah. Sounds like they're they're close, I guess, but that's what we're told last month too, so. But it's. Yeah, we'll get it back and we'll see. Sounds like they're playing, taking, taking it to planning commission, so. Just bring it here too. You guys to look at if you want to.
I'd like that.
If you don't want to, you don't have to.
I I'm interested.
Okay, well, yeah, it would seem like maybe. Those would kind of go along together to some extent, or are they presenting us with the? Kind of a done deal. I I guess it's up to them, but there might be some value in this. Give and take as we proceed.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I think, um, so we'll see. What they decide to do, but um, I'm not sure what the changes that they've made are, so I don't know if we're gonna even be okay.
Have they taken that to planning commission before? We okay anything or?
I don't know. They, I don't know. So I mean, they they mentioned it going to their planning commission later this month, so their second meeting. But yeah, we haven't seen it yet, so I'm not sure. They said it's close, so I don't know what that means either, so.
Well, is it something that that we? I I think we have interest in seeing it, but are we on the decision chain?
Hey, they, no, you don't have to make.
Not formally, it's a contract.
Yeah. Yeah, so. But it does, I mean, it relates to the plans that we've adopted and you guys have worked on, so. I mean, I think there is some. Some interest, at least on my part, for to get to get your feedback, so. Before it goes to the commissioners, I think they would appreciate it.
We'd all like to. See it, right? Even though we may not.
Fun to see it.
We may not have an up down vote, but it's relevant to what we're doing.
It would be fun to see it. No, but well, yeah. I know they're working, they they've got a lot more people to look at in the city, so. I think they're just making sure everybody has their their chance to have their say on it, so.
Many of them are busy with elections, so.
Could be, yeah.
So am I correct to, or maybe I always try to oversimplify things so I can understand them, that the the key piece? That we're interested in is a commitment from the city. To provide a centralized water sewer outside city lands. Is that?
Correct, okay, that is our key.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on the intergovernmental agreement? Okay, um, I'm. I've been working on the overlay zone. I'm pretty close to a rough draft that I can get to probably Matt to look over. Um, I'm working on the mapping for that as well. So. Trying to get it to you before the end of the year. That's my, that's my goal, so. Um, we're, we're moving along there. Yeah, and then see what's.
And by the overlay zone, then you mean also the verbiage that would go with that.
Correct, yeah, it'll have the map in the text.
Roughly, how would the overlay zone map compare to the. L R M growth area map? I mean, I know it's been more detailed, but. Could you quantify roughly?
Uh, so.
Be down to parcel level or bigger than that or?
Yeah, it'll be down to parcel level. And. You know, where there's circles, there's not going to be circles, so there's going to be follow property lines as much as possible and section lines and that type of stuff, so it's a little bit. More usable.
Well, it will be a zoning map, just like our.
Correct.
Rural residential zone. This piece is zone this, this piece is all that, so every parcel will be zoned.
Well. What's that?
But within the, within the overlay.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Each property will have, I mean, some of the bigger properties, um, like. Hundred and sixty acre, whatever properties, those ones might be split and there might be something that's closer to the city this and something that's. You know, farther away, that's. Less dense or whatever. Um, but yeah. It'll be areas, but it'll, each parcel will be within that area, so. We're working on there, so. And then let's see, the zoning resolution updates to zoning districts. I mean.
Yeah, so I kind of talked about it earlier. Definitions and. Uh, my news table are. Done in my opinion. For what I'm going to present at least. And then I'm working on rezoning the entire county. So it takes. Little bit of time. I would say. Fifty percent done that, I don't know. Um, I'm in Centennial right now, so.
So.
So I started in the southeast corner and I've kind of split it up by like. Pie slices by highways, how the highways split the county. So I, and then I've gone south and then now I'm at Centennial, the northern part of the county I'm not too worried about. That won't take very long, but. Yeah, so.
He's also making a map for Centennial, just so if they want to incorporate.
Help him out with that.
So, all right, when you say I'm rezoning the whole county, that that sounds quite bold.
Well, I mean, we, we need to when we're adopting. New zoning, uh, residential zoning districts, we're adopting new. Commercial zoning districts in this, so. I mean, it kind of needs to be done.
Yes, my question would be, is it all? Here's something is zone commercial and then you're splitting it into commercial, but do three? Or are you taking, say, something that's currently zone commercial and zoning it ag?
Essentially both.
Really? Oh, okay, this will be quite interesting.
Oh, yeah. Some has to do with like current land uses, some has to do with. Where we see stuff going forward, some has to do with parcel size, I mean. Yeah, I mean, it each parcel is getting looked at. One by one, so it's a.
So so this issue that I've been tracking of. Uh, parcels that were zoned rural residential simply because their tax status was that way back, but and and it were not for that ag, I guess that they would have been zoned.
Yeah.
It's just with complan.
Yeah.
Is that gonna come out of this?
Yeah, that's big fix.
And and how?
And I mean, right now, like. The zoning map is literally like my opinion.
Sure.
So. I mean, obviously I'll go over to David and that kind of stuff, so. Uh, then we'll bring it here and we can go. Through it.
So so walk me through that mechanic, I think that's quite interesting. So I'm a, I have a a piece of property that it currently zoned rural residential. And then you're gonna come forward and say, well, that really should have been, should be ag. Is that now a parcel by parcel zoning change that has to be noticed in the whole nine yards? Okay, that's.
Well. We're doing it all at once, so.
Wouldn't it be legislative? Action because you're doing the entire county at the same time? And it's following the complan?
I think it depends on the nature. Nature of the change. Um, I know in two thousand fifteen, you said all properties which were this are now this. I mean, if it, if it is a different zone. Yeah. In substance and. Restriction, that's gonna have to be individually noticed or we're gonna have to amend. Zoning district. Otherwise. I wonder what we just found here. If we do not follow the procedures and regulations that misgrounds for reversal.
Yeah, I know, that that's why I ask, this is a really big deal. I thought that what we had done was that we had carved out a. Like the protection overlay zone, that. Simply came in on top of everything. And there was no sense of. Hey, your property is now being brought into the overlay zone and we run and notice you and invite protest. And that that was done as a more global thing, which is, I think, what what you guys are kind of contemplating.
We notified them, but it wasn't like a formal public notice.
We also, right, amended. How are we specified how that zone is to be changed?
Okay, but that was.
Prior to do.
About as specific to the APOZ?
Yeah, remember?
Well, so I'm trying to remember how much that was.
We.
Generic and how much of it was.
Who said, uh, like amendments to the APOZ boundary. Will not follow. Well, the zoning district process.
Do we need to contemplate? Something to create space for? Yeah, on one hand, it seems heavy handed to just say, yeah, it used to be that you were this and now you're this, but. But the zoning was done in the first place, it was done just. Wall to wall with a broke rover, nobody, nobody did, nobody notified anybody of anything, I'm guessing, just did it.
Correct.
So once you've done it, now anything further is a zoning change parcel by parcel.
Because we have defined it as such.
Okay, and would it be? Would there be any merit in changing those definitions simply to?
Or changing those procedures?
Change those procedures to allow this to go forward?
Very well, maybe.
Because it would seem worth thinking about not to get around the law, but if it's parcel by parcel. None of us are getting a little high enough to see the end of it.
Yes.
Okay, so.
We're gonna have like thousands of zoning changes on one meeting. Yeah, that's.
All right, well, then let's get you guys coordinated. Do we need a procedural change to allow this to go forward? I mean, there's obviously arguments. Swirling around that, but yeah, let's let's sort those out. Okay. Proceeding. October protect is that, are we done with that topic? Sounds like. Found a harness, yes, but maybe we could follow that up. Okay, I'm looking at October protection overlay zone Supreme Court case. Mr. Harris is gonna share that.
The Wyoming Supreme Court issued its decision on September twenty fifth. Uh, for the APOZ appeals. Their holding was that there is no. Exception to judicial review under the Administrative Procedure Act for legislative actions of agencies. Uh, so it overturned its precedent. From. Approximately five to ten cases. Uh, going back so far as the sixties. Admittedly, those cases were not well. Elucidated, um, they were kind of one off. Sentence or two. You know, legislative actions are not reviewable under the APA. So they recognized that that was not a. Particularly workable or well. Analyzed um rule. So they have. They overturned um that precedent. And have now ruled that. It is not a matter so much of legislative versus non legislative agency action. Although it somewhat is. It is. And and they essentially. They created a new framework for judicial review of agency rulemaking essentially. So. Starting off, a reviewing court must first examine each amendment or action to determine the extent to which it is reviewable. If it is a legislative action. Then the scope of review is confined. To whether it was. Contrary um to. The constant or. It'd be easier if I actually, or it'd be more correct if I actually read it. So if it is a legislative action, um, there's some recognition recognition, uh, which courts do to essentially legislatures all the time, or it's not the court's purview to determine the prudence of legislation. Uh, it is their function to determine the legality of it. So if it is a legislative action, the review is limited to whether it is contrary to constitutional right, privilege, how uh. Constitutional right, power, privilege or immunity. Not in accordance with law. Or in excess of statutory jurisdiction, authority. Or limitations or lacking statutory right. Or whether it was divergent from its own rules, said whether an agency followed its own rules and regulations and. Essentially amending its rules and regulations. And then if it. And then if it is not. Uh, a legislative action, but is rather an adjudicative action, um, the whole APA scope of review is on the table. So arbitrary and capricious then comes in as well, uh, into those others. So, uh, it was remanded, um, back to the district court and for, for further proceedings under that opinion. Start back at the beginning.
Are you able to formulate an argument on the now revised? Regulations?
Those have not been, or those have not been adopted yet.
Oh, they're on November first, okay.
Oh, but. Some of them have, I mean, this suit was filed before we moved the boundary and various things that we have changed since then. Okay, so, to, as Hanning's question, we're, we're.
So this is still the twenty twenty three amendments, which is, uh, uh, under review, um. Uh. I think certainly as, as things change, it will determine the scope of, uh, review even further.
Okay.
So some things are moot, because we. If it gets approved on November first, some things are moot because they were removed.
Possibly, possibly not.
Or moot, okay, all right.
Yeah, and, and some things are moot because we, like the boundary, that, that was changed in a very. In a different way since this lawsuit was filed. So, the, 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 the new suit will decide whether, whether that to is moot or not. Like, there's a lot of sorting out.
There's the possibility, Jim.
Okay, okay, but the law that's being challenged has not, in its entirety, been the regulation for some time now. No, good.
So, yeah, back square one.
Nice.
Okay. Can the plaintiffs, their pleadings at this stage?
Uh. Yeah, no, I mean, well. Yeah. Okay, maybe, no, cause I mean, now, now we're, now we're operating under a, a newly announced, um. Framework of judicial review.
So, so who's, where does the ball in?
Uh, the, uh, Judge Westby, the second judicial district, ju- district court of Albany County.
You've had time to digest the framework a little bit, and what are, how are you feeling about? Back to square one and.
Um. Yeah, I think the framework is, uh, is much more workable. Um, and it gets, hopefully, a lot of those. Those things, uh, you know, out of the way. Uh, such as, I mean, essentially just questioning the prudence of particular policy action. Um. And whether it was, you know, supported by whatever, uh, but. It will be, uh, yeah, it'll be very interesting going forward.
Indeed. Okay, uh, well, then. I, I have already voted, uh, that we are voting to retain judges, for example, so we may not even have the same judge going forward, so, how's that work? It's, we're added to the court, I guess, whoever's in that seat.
Correct.
And I don't mean to express any dissatisfaction with our, our current. Uh, yeah, lots of things in flux.
Good. So, any, any further questions? Um, would you guys like to read your opinion, do you want me to send it out?
I'd like to see that.
Okay.
I'd like to see that, and, and I would just throw in, as I have repeatedly, that I, I have thought the county is being very well represented throughout this thing, so, uh. I, I'm quite confident that we're in good hands with, with your counsel.
Do you have deadlines that you have to file by now, or are you waiting for the district court to tell you that?
Uh, that is unclear. Um, to, to all those questions.
Gotta be comfortable in the world of gray, I guess.
Uh, yeah, and I think, um, I think my hair loss represents that.
It's, it's bedroom, good ventilation for all that heavy duty metal activity.
Yeah.
Your son won't be able to pull your hair.
Yeah. Yeah, you get some hair.
This may be the kind of thing where time's on our side, I mean, maybe at some point the other side decides, we're done. Well, there's a lot of water going under the bridge, and we're proceeding, and I think we should, to, to provide the best regulatory environment we can for, for well expected decisions. All right, well. Thank you, um, all right, that finishes those, let's get to the added item, um. And, and maybe let's just remind ourselves, uh, we had a project list that Mr. Gersh put together, um, I think. You represented it as kind of a, very much a. A first step. Yeah, do you have that list, is that something?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get full, Gersh is gonna follow up.
And, and we did go through it one by one, but then, the, some of the other things we discussed. Uh. Were. Uh. Well, have you done anything more with the list since our last meeting?
I have not, yeah.
Okay. What I pulled out of my notes from that meeting, uh, as we go forward, and this is a. Living document, was the cap list of to do items, which is now a separate list, but to somehow get in on the, on the roster. Um, it's been, David had asked us at some point to consider railroad buffer zones.
I'm still working on it.
Okay, um, then rezoning of those scattered residential zoning, it sounds like, is, is, is told us those are being rolled into his work. Um. Ms. Kocornik, at that time, had suggested we might want to revisit solar energy regs. Um. Then, on this list, you had the, uh, comp plan update, which is a rather large thing, at, at the meeting last month, we discussed. A subset of the comp plan updates, which would, might best be characterized as kind of edits and things just to make them more consistent. Uh, the one that, example that I brought up then was the, uh, priority growth area plans, so, uh. As, as I understood. We continue to be open to just, almost editorial review, let's just make the compliance say what it needs to say. Short of, of convening all the, the public meetings and hiring consultants and doing it all over again, so there's kind of two, two levels of comp plan address. Um. And then what we said then was that we would look that over, develop it into a more fulsome wish list, and then. Think about, uh, prioritization. So. Uh, I think the, the general structure of it was, was well received, particularly the, the status and the. Uh, I, I can't make it out from here, but your, your other columns were useful, oh, percent complete. Some of them were already off of our plates and planning department's plates. Uh. So I guess my point bringing it into the agenda was, let's continue that, and, and maybe it's another homework assignment that, uh, uh, I didn't. Provide any additional input beyond that meeting, but let's get that input rolled in, and then. Invite my colleagues similarly to, let's, let's, let's do what we talked about, let's look at the list. Uh, see what you think ought to be on it, and then, then we can think about. How we would prioritize it, that obviously has to be closely coordinated with staff. Availability and time, and we're not the bosses, but we can express our opinions and feelings. So, comments, other?
Well, what you just said actually triggers a question for me. Sue, actually, who are the bosses of the planning department? Is it the three county commissioners, is it us, is it? The planners themselves?
Yeah, the, it's the three county commissioners, we have, um, you know, we all supervise various departments.
Right.
And that's, we've all elected which department we would do that, and that'll be happening again after the election, so, yeah, um.
So in theory, or as a practical matter, you have been in charge of giving direction to the planning department?
Correct.
Okay. And it's not us.
That's correct.
We don't have that authority.
We are advisory.
You're advisory, and, and we take your recommendations seriously.
Of course, but I, I just wanted to make sure I understood what the hierarchy was.
Correct.
If, if we were to decide that we wanted to develop a, a house color standard for Albany County, uh, we would expect the staff to say. That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard, and then tell, county commissioner tells us to do it or not do it. But in our advisory capacity, let us advise.
Is there anything on the list that you think, uh, the EAC could? Be of help with? I don't know what their makeup is of, what their members' expertise is. I mean, we got their input on. On the wind. Uh, the wind regs. Could they have any, do any legwork on? Lighting of digital signs? Noise mitigation? I, I don't know, I'm just sort of throwing it out, like, is, they're, they're available to serve the county and the city? And is there expertise there that would be worth tapping into? I, I have no idea, I'm just.
I would think that once we incorporate, like, some of the casque rock for stuff, that would be a good, a good project for them, depending on what we decide we want to prioritize. Um, they could be definitely involved with that. Um, yeah, anything environmental in nature, anything that's, is going to impact the environment. Which I'm not sure exactly how a lot of these. Things kind of. Play into thing, or how that works, huh, like the digital sign stuff, like. Really, there's, I mean, the pretty technical standards and things that we're looking at, or whatever we'll be looking at. Um, I'm not sure if that's a good place for them.
So they, they may not have anybody that's like an expert in wildlife and how lighting affects like birds and things like that.
Yeah, maybe, I guess, I don't, I don't know, um.
Or do you know their makeup, Sue, you know, the general expertise on the EAC right now?
I don't, no, I, I know who represents the commission, and I know who represents city, I'm not gonna do that, I don't know.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I, I attend all their meetings, um. I mean, the interest that they're, what they're really interested in is like, um, the carbon neutrality stuff. Um. What else have they, they've looked into, like, um. Uh, what else have they been looking into? I mean, they, they, they'll get a lot of presentations about how things work, and. How's the wastewater treatment plant work, and how does, um, that. They've had things on like the Wyoming toad or whatever, introduction or, example, production of the. What they're doing to, to help, um, really up that, that population, um. But they are, they are kind of looking for projects, so I mean, if there's ever anything that we're really. Wanting their, in, in, you know, information from them on, definitely go that route. I mean, wildlife might be an area, I, I don't, I don't know their individual, what their, I mean, a lot of them are professors with expertise, um. So, um, we have our wildlife, rep, or wildlife, um, expert here already, so we don't. We go through that, so. But, but yeah. But that's, that's a good thought, you know, if there's ever anything that we feel like, any projects. That we're working on, that we're like, hey, you know, maybe we should send it through them, you know? It does take a little bit, cause they only meet every other month or whatever, and so like, by the time they get something, discuss it, come up with a recommendation, it could be six, eight months.
Okay.
So, for, so anything worth, it's pressing, but if it's like other things that we're working on, or. Um, you know, like a lot of the casque rock for stuff, like we have a report or something we're doing, or. Um, you know, whatever we're working on there, we just want their, some extra eyes on it, and. And we're, we're, we're working through a process and it's gonna take a while anyways, you know, I mean, they're a good, good resource, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Although, in, in that spirit, I wonder if, if, uh, another field in our matrix would be ourselves, I mean, there are many of these that. That an individual commissioner has been, uh, active in, and it isn't just us saying, hey, why don't you guys go think about this? Uh, there's been David, the fencing, for example, was, was quite helpful, so maybe that would be another thing in our, in our list. Is there a commissioner with this particular interest or some energy to add to it?
Sure, absolutely.
So does that, it isn't just you guys?
Yeah, I mean, it's always good to have, the more eyes on anything we're doing is, is the better, cause. Me, me and Joe can look at things till we're low in the face or whatever, but, um. And then have someone else look at it, and it's like, oh, yeah, I mean, that's. That's a benefit of the public process, right? It's like when we, we've kind of got what we're thinking about, and then we hear from the public, and they're like, oh, hey, I never thought of that, that's something to think about, you know? So, so yeah, we would, we would welcome the expertise that you guys have, so.
Um, all right, other thoughts on that subject, I've, I've found, there's, there's three things we've called homework assignments, one was to look at the, the minutes. Thoughts on how we might change those, the other was to look at the definitions, set stuff back to these guys, and thirdly, to look over the list. And, that are, that are two bits for a lot.
Uh, I just wanted to say that the Wyoming game and fish department, uh, have been running into a lot of problems with fencing in other counties. Uh, big problem in Carbon County, so to go development fenced in a huge area that is like on migration corridor and. Um. They, uh, are consulting our, or, or recommending now, the Wyoming game and fish is recommending. That all the counties and the state adopt our regulations. That's good news, they asked me about, you know, when I explained how we came up with that. Mr. Ayers and I will work together to get them. Um. So that's, that's something that we can, to do about.
When that, when that statute was passed, there was a lot of pushback from developers, saying, we, we don't want to do this at all, is that? Going anyplace?
Legally, they already had to.
Yeah. Yeah, what?
Well, so legally, statually, um, they already had to create, uh, perimeter fences. Uh, the, the amendment was for that to come under the purview of county subdivision permitting. That we had to then require, uh, those plans, um, for, for the perimeter fence and make it a, the part of the permit.
Even though it was basically already there?
Yes.
Oh, all right, so. Yeah. We, we, we got assigned to be the muscle of this issue.
Exactly what happened.
Okay, um. Other commissioner comments?
Sure, I'll make one, please. Uh, time flies, and my term, I believe, will be coming up at the end of this year, it's only two more meetings, I believe. And, uh, with thoughts of our upcoming national elections. Um, which are, I, in my judgment, truly momentous for the nation, I just like to say that I appreciate the fact that. High discussions, professional. Fact base, cordial, if not friendly, and I've enjoyed working with everyone here.
No, I, I felt the same way, you brought considerable expertise in, um, but so where are we on terms? Do you guys have that finger tips, or do we all know?
Uh, I can hold it up. Yeah.
You are just a nude.
I'm, I'm the newest appointee, and, and then. Cause Hanning was appointed to fill it, fill up it, one and then got reappointed.
So, there are.
Was that Diane? Okay.
There are two spots open at the end of this year, uh, Mr. Platt and Ms. Ben Davids, um, and then. Then of next year will be Ms. Kocornik and Ms. Hanning.
You must have been filling out a term.
Yes.
Okay.
And then.
I was like, then Diane who filled in the term.
Mr. Platt and Mr. Ms. Ben David at the end of this year, uh, Ms. Kocornik and Ms. Hanning at the end of next year. And then Bern just got put on, so.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. So, if someone's unhappy with either of you, now's their opportunity. I can't imagine that being the case.
We'll see what the election brings.
But.
I hope you'll both reapply no matter what.
I am going to reapply, I'm learning a lot, and I'm, um. You know, I've spent my entire career, plus forty years. Generating information to be used by planning and, and development and all this, and. Trying my best to give as best information possible to protect wildlife and natural resources. Um, and I realize that sometimes what we do here in one evening can have more impact than those forty years of work, so, so I, I intend to apply. I don't know if I'll be reappointed, but.
I've likened it to the, the blind man and the elephant, I think is one of the most powerful parables out there, where. Each blind person. Encounters the elephant at a different spot, and the one that gets the tail thinks, oh, elephants are like ropes, and the one that gets the foot, oh, elephants are like tree trunks, and, and. And so often, in, on the public, that's, that's what. We, we see an issue, and we get all wrapped around it, and I've found, being on this side of the table, one is forced to look at more of the elephant than just that one little, little beast that they would otherwise encounter, so. So I appreciate everyone's participation in that process. Um. Okay, further comments? Um, next regular meet, regular meeting is November thirteenth, uh, if there's no other business to come before us, we are adjourned.
November thirteenth, right?
Thank you.